All right, there's not many for public comments. If you're going to make a public comment, you can come to the podium and say your address. We have three minutes as an individual if you're coming for a contribution. Any public comments tonight?
Good evening, everyone. Tammy Ng, 115 East Doris. I just have a concern, a safety concern for Main Street. There's a lot of activity in the evening, and I know we brought up putting up the crosswalks there before and it was denied. But the gym class is there, Fit Body Boot Camp. They do three or four times a week there, three or four classes within 45 minutes. And there's 10 or 15 or 20 girls coming out of there, guys, whatever. They're crossing the street, and you've got all the people eating at the restaurants and all the activity. There's a lot of traffic there coming through here for the evening rush. So I just see a big hazard, and I just want to bring it to your attention for a big safety concern.
All right. Thank you, Tammy. Appreciate that. We'll make note of that and have a discussion with VDOT about what we can do and can't do correctly as a mayor.
The mayor of town now.
Town manager. All right. She's acting on her own turf. Yes. I suppose if you could contact VDOT and request some information, I'd appreciate that. All right, any other public comments? Last call, any other public comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to the staff reports. Staff reports down at council tonight. Please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Any questions on any public reports tonight?
No, I don't have any, but you guys have been pretty active, and we really appreciate that. Probably going to be a little more active this time of year through town.
There's been an increase in traffic.
Do you have any comments on the public comment that was just made about the traffic, public, the pedestrian traffic going across Main Street?
Obviously, anything we can do to increase public safety. Again, I prefer VDOT as far as the technical applied, but I will take it at night. Certainly, because it's gotten darker earlier. There's an increase in traffic, and certain vehicles are parking on Main Street, which is a good thing for the town. Obviously, it has increased since last year, so.
As a safety point of view, I think VDOT had said that we need to put our own parking spot lines out there.
I'm sorry.
I said, as a safety point, you know, the parking on the Main Street, we don't have any lines as far as what's, you know, parking in the spots. I think VDOT directed that we have to do it, we have to pay for it or whatever. Is there anything that, you know, anybody you might know or anything in your department that might be able to, or a safety reason to why you might be able to get this escalated? Because, you know, it's a matter, it cuts down availability, and also leaves bigger gaps for few people to come across, or smaller gaps that you can't be seen at when crossing. I mean, is there something on your end you can look at, or maybe you know some people that might go help us out and get these lines painted?
I will make some phone calls. Again, that's the first, you know, obviously, it's first of all, so I'll make some phone calls, just some localities and see what they do. What has worked, what hasn't.
And maybe what the lengths are and find out for us.
Sure.
Yeah, that's sort of a factor immediately is the crosswalk pedestrians. You know, that's where VDOT's got to come and say, this is what we've got to do, so maybe two public reports in, that would be good. Any other issues that you'd like to discuss?
While we're on the issue of parking, Sheriff Lepa has joined us here tonight. There's an issue that has, actually, it's been ongoing for a while, needs to be addressed. Ennis Street, which is the next street over, crosses in front of the general district court complex. On court days, which court has, court days have increased dramatically over the years from what they used to be. There's Wednesdays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays are all busy days for that complex now. I was with the county, is the owner and manager of courthouse, as well as the parking lot that was just paved across the street. With that said, there is a yellow curving on the eastern side of the road that only extends a certain portion out. A request has been made, which I would agree with, to create a new parking zone in front of the county's parking lot, on Ennis Street, that would alleviate the complexity of one-way traffic. Two vehicles can't pass, as well as decrease the sight distance for pedestrians leaving the courthouse. I've talked to Sheriff Lepa. Again, this is a, and I've been in contact with the mayor about this. Of course, he's not here tonight. I'll defer to the town attorney. I don't know if we need to vote on this or not, but what I would like to see happen, obviously, the county has more assets than we do. They have some parking signs laying around, some yellow paint. I would just as soon defer it to them, put the installation. Should council choose to do that. Again, it is an issue, it's been an issue for quite some time.
So you use an additional parking signs to zone something off, is that what you're saying?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
And in accordance with 4621220, that deferment, that decision is made by the town. Now, the enforcement part of it, obviously, will fall back to us.
How many spaces are you looking at doing that? Or are we?
About 60. You're talking about the whole side, its opposite?
Mm-hmm.
We were talking about that, as we were talking about it, because if you block that side off, it also helps visibility, as you said. People will be able to see you. I've also talked to chief office. All three of us are in agreement that something needs to be done there. Two cars can't get through there, and a fire truck's not going to be able to get through there, even if they park there. We spoke to the Commonwealth attorney, and we felt like closest to the courthouse is okay, because they don't have to cross traffic. And it's probably less spaces, although it's less spaces, for a safety concern, we're better off.
Yeah, and probably typically what that's going to do is push them back over to this parking lot over here anyway, right? I mean, that's really the other effect it's going to have on there.
Well, in theory, that's what we were, that was what was supposed to happen all along, to utilize the spaces there and then deal with what parks here.
Do we need to mention?
And I can attest to that, because I came through the other day at court time, and you're right, it's only one vehicle get through. And we are on both sides, and it should not be that way at all. So I think we need to maybe see about session off that right side of Venus towards the town, Main Street side, is no parking, either sign wise or getting it painted yellow, one way or the other.
Well, painting it yellow is sufficient from the code, however.
Then you'd say.
So it'd be something new, it'd be nice to have.
Yeah, it's probably nice to have a parking sign, so it'll be easier. Gentlemen, if you'll give us a few minutes, she's pulling up town code, and we'll take a look at that and come back to you on that.
Sure.
We can bring back up on board business.
Are there any exact parameters of what you want designated as your parking?
The whole side. I've got them measured for you.
No, actually, from Chase Street to courthouse. Ennis, it would be the, what, west, east side?
From Chase Street to courthouse lane on the east side of Ennis Street?
Yes.
West side.
West side.
The west side of Ennis Street.
I mean, you have the gaps that are already for the circuit cords, so you actually pick up just where the courthouse is now.
Right.
I have a question. Are there any general rules about parking in town on the streets?
I'm asking a lot because of Maury Avenue. I mean, this brings to our issues there. I don't know what we've really decided if we can park on one side of the street or the other, but it brings to mind that signs might be good in streets where we aren't parking. If there's a general consensus that you can park on the street, I don't kind of know. That's another topic that I kind of felt that maybe, I don't know what the general rule is in all the streets here. I mean, is there a blanket rule about we can park on the side of the streets, or some streets we can't?
So the only things that are actually stipulated in state code are handicap parking spaces and parking in front of fire hydrants or fire apparatuses operating. The rest is deferred to the locality. So again, 462122021, I believe, is the one that affects the counties, is a very broad blanket on what can be done as far as, basically, it's up to councils, the city councils and committees to approve what they want as a no blocking zone versus, I mean, you can do anything from putting up meters to make a difference to blocking out things with yellow paint on the parking sign. So there's, I won't say there's endless options, but there are more, the state delegates more authority on parking because it's a civil violation to the localities versus.
So it sounds like streets and sidewalks may want to take a look at that, do a study, and find out, you know, what really makes sense, get the pulse and whistle on.
Now, your one exception is dealing with under 888, which is improper stopping on the highway. So that includes stopping, parking where it creates a hazard. So I don't know if that muddies the waters for you or makes it a little better.
How do you define that?
Well, and that's just it. When you look at roadway, that part that's actually paved. Highway goes from your boundary lines, as the chief was saying, as far as what you want for parking regulations. The highway needs from what you own. So what VDOT has, their right of ways go. So then, whatever VDOT's property is, and if you're halfway in it, you may not be creating a hazard, but then that goes back to the discretion of law enforcement. If you can't get through it because you're parked on the road, then both are going to be a violation.
Which is where Maury Avenue is.
Yeah.
Yeah. We have the same issues you guys are talking about tonight.
Yeah, and that's something.
So a lot, a lot of times, the town code, the state law delegates to the locality the ability to pass a parking ordinance and then to delegate it, like, to the town manager to make parking regulations. I don't see anything like that in our code, so we would need an ordinance, but I think it would be probably a good thing, because then maybe it could be used to address other issues as well. So I'll just do a general parking ordinance, and then administratively, this area can be blocked off.
Our good friend, Chief, good friend, because Ashland has a pretty good one.
Yes.
Ashland's just another town that you can mirror some of the same issues that we have here.
And that is how they did it in Ashland.
So you have access to that, too? Okay, good.
I'll just declare, but we have parking ordinances already.
Right, but nothing that says that the town manager can modify the rules?
Okay, thank you, chief. Yes, sir.
I was going to throw out, you know, the new business that's here and everyone's running. Do they tell them to bring the safety vest with you? When you go to job, maybe let's put some reflectorized stuff, put it on the people. Can you get up there and say, hey, you're working out, can you not get a little reflectorized one, or something that would help everyone? I mean, again, they might want to deal with the county, I think it's the county that put up what we have at Food Run. Flashing lights when a pedestrian comes up there to let you know, that's giving another suggestion for you, but.
He doesn't have us jog outside during the wintertime when it gets dark, but during the summertime and it's light, we do jog around. I mean, just as far as crossing the street, going in and out, because we were parking in the back behind the building, but now he wants everybody to park in the front, which makes an overload parking, especially on Taco Tuesdays.
Wow.
Yeah, I want to say. It's not just that business, it's every business in town, you know, from the photographer on down the street. I mean, there's just a lot more traffic. I mean, because I patronize all of these, you know, most of these places, and it is, I've always said, in the mixed house in the morning, I am sometimes leaving at 7:00 in the morning, and people do not slow down. It's, there's a problem on Main Street with crossing. I like the lights, though.
And VDOT doesn't, you know, says, well, we don't make the requirements because of the distance between intersections to put any other crosswalks in, you know? It's like, so what do we do? You know, we're a small area, we are picking up in volume, you know, and safety is a great concern, you know, to this town. We need to make noise, rattle some cages, and do some stuff to sit by get some changes, you know, whether it's parking, crosswalk, better lighting, you know, flashing lights, let people know, hey, whatever. But, you know, when you fight VDOT, you're sometime up against a wall.
So I guess my question is, is there, are there any options for us as a town to do anything there? Or is that totally VDOT's decision?
Well, VDOT, again, regulates the highways.
Yeah, I know.
And that's where they regulate it, and you're talking 301, even though it comes through the town.
Right.
It's the state highway that's there, and how much distance we have and what you have, you know, that's why, like, 207, although it's a product, but still part of 207, I try to mirror what they did with the lights to help you with pedestrian traffic.
And we get towns, when we ride through places like Ashland, Maritza County, City of Freshburg, and we see multiple crosswalks with lights and multiple signs, you've got to get on the stand, they pay for them themselves, they own their roads.
Yeah, they take care of their own roads, yeah.
So that's, you know, when you see those things, I know everybody wants them, but for us to get them, you know, take them off for now.
All right, and I do have two other questions, and I saw George came in, he was a little late, I know he's had a couple of public comments, and I'll, George, I'll take your thunder a little bit about that. The question that we have from the Bowling Green Meadow subdivision is that we've now got signs in town, the speed limit signs are extra fine. Can we put those extra fines in the Bowling Green Meadows subdivisions on their 25 mile an hour speed limit? It's also, is there a restriction on that?
You would have to go through another study process, or through a freeway study process. The increase in fines came off of a prior speed study that was conducted by VDOT, I believe it was in 2017.
So that doesn't blanket the town, it's only on 301?
It's just that route.
Okay.
Which, again, leads us back to Maury Avenue, through Freshburg.
Right, okay. And then we'll need to talk to VDOT about the timing on the lighting, Chase and Main Street. It's not on the sensor network, I don't think, it's just on a default timer, which creates a whole issue for a couple of folks when they're going through there early in the morning, so.
Tony, since you're here, and he brought up timing of lights, Route 2 on the weekends is a bear, you know, and I know we had, I think, chief had talked to you the other day, and I had called the sheriff's office, Spotsylvania, about that, too. That, I mean, we came through the other day, and it was backed up all the way to, up to the store, what's it, Corbin Store. It was backed all the way to there, you know, and still steady piling in. It does affect us here, you know, we get a lot of traffic flow coming, especially when you got accidents on 95. I haven't really, I haven't experienced any bad backups here at our stoplights at Brown Street, but I know that has, and that does affect Carolina, the backs up into Carolina. Is there anything you can do to talk to VDOT, you know, with Spotsylvania, to do a special timing on these lights on Sundays or Saturdays and Sundays to allow the traffic to move quicker, or just a little help, you know? It's, I know we're not Carolina County, but we all travel that way, so we all have to endure at the same time.
Okay. For 24 years with the state police, I couldn't say anything about VDOT, other than follow with the upper management line. As your sheriff, I continue to talk to VDOT. The situation that you had, again, on Sunday was what, Thanksgiving weekend, and everyone's coming back. I've been fighting VDOT ever since they were talking about the nice bridge. You think you see traffic now, if you wait until that's gone. Whereas VDOT, what did they do? They came in to do the study, 60 mile an hour, 55, 60, 55, 60, then we're down 55, 45, and onto the interstate. I know the board members have, I don't think it would hurt for the town if they wished to join that, and trying to get VDOT to do four lanes of 301 down to Handle. That's the only way that you're going to leave vehicle traffic, so people could get off down at Ashland, people could get off at Dozel, and not even worry about 95. Of course, we knew that the bypass was a double-edged sword for our town, we know that. But then that, again, your overflow came because it was two crashes on 95 south.
Right.
But I believe that.
Okay.
I'm very sorry, I know we're not down, but down, we appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, next item is public works. Want to go over your report for us, Billy? We appreciate that.
Well, we took number one clarifier down. I believe it was the first time it's been in service for, I don't know, eight or nine years. Should be done once a year. But miraculously, it came out good, considering. We had a few breaks, water break up in Maury, it was off the road, though, so we didn't have to dig on the pavement, which is good. Clicking leaves.
Okay, so a question for you. Do we have a continued problem with stops up here right across from the bank, which you guys were working up there the other day?
Yes, we do. I was talking, I think Melissa and I were talking, we're going to try to maybe look into a brand or something, because that line is just so bad. I mean, it's in terrible shape. One of them is right in front of the courthouse. Yeah.
So we've got a scope camera, and we know what it looks like inside, or we have some information on it?
We do, yeah. Still, we'll take some pictures every time they go in there. It's like old brick, a cast iron pipe. It's just deteriorating.
So it's a combination of cast iron and?
And brick, a lot, you know, yeah.
Would that explain some of the sewer smells we might be getting in some of the buildings when that thing backs up? Because I know one of my builders, they talk about that all the time, but every now and then they'll get a smell, and it could be from those lines backing up, or?
Well, it could, but I believe most of the time, it's probably just a little trap that's stuck. You know, if you don't use it, they'll stick open. Pretty much like on the back here.
So how long is that line we're talking about, this deteriorated, do you know?
That, I don't know. We only went up as far as we had to, but like, the more we try to flush it out and vacuum it, pieces will break off. So, you know, actually, the whole line should be replaced.
Well, you know, two years ago, I gave you a, some information about pipe liners?
Yes.
Where you go in and put that liner inside of it, and it seals it, and it doesn't, did you take a look at that? Maybe you want to go back and revisit that, and maybe something maybe applicable?
Well, yeah, I mean, I did look at it. The only bad thing is you've still got to have some strength in your pipe, you know, and a lot of these pipes are just, I mean, they're bad.
Totally gone, okay. So you're on top of that, you're going to address that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other things you'd like to enlighten us on tonight?
Uh, no.
I've got something for you. All right, we've got this new subdivision that's right outside of town, that's, yes, at Brookfield, thank you, that's popping up. I understand, you know, all this coming to us, and I know, I think the county's got to redo their line, because their line's not large enough to handle it.
Right.
And I think ours is okay to handle it. But my concern is, is, maybe you can get back with us on this, do we have enough where we're at right now to expand, to do more than, you know? Or if we get more subdivision popping up out here, whatever, and they want us to take all this?
Oh, you mean the capacity expansion?
Yeah, well, the capacity of the plants we have now, I know we're good.
Right.
But how much expansion do we, future expansion do we have at that plant, you know, 15, 20 years from now?
I'm not sure, but after Brookfield, we should be a little bit over half.
So typically, what happens, Mark, when you're at 70% capacity, you start planning for the expansion on the other side, and you look at that at some point in time, you know, and you're only talking about the source side of that. So when you get, start edging up to that 50, 60, 70%, you need to start planning for the future expansion. That's kind of what, you know, the rule of thumb is that we have.
But do we have the financial capability now?
Well, the question is, do we have the capacity now?
Well, that I don't know.
Right, so do we have the capacity, and once we have that capacity from that, where does that put us on our total capacity utilization?
It should be a little, like, over 50%, about 50-some percent. I mean, we're still good.
Yeah.
And I don't know what, after Brookfield, I'm not sure what's going to, what's popping out.
And you're only talking about water, you're not talking about, I mean, sewer, not water out there, correct?
Right, just so you know.
Got you. Okay. All right, any other questions for Billy? Thanks, Billy, appreciate that. All right, events coordinator, in economic development, coordinator, you got a lot of tires.
Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, thank you for having me tonight. Just a few things before we get to the after-action report for Harvest Festival, which is in your packet. Just want to mention that the Bowling Green Christmas parade is scheduled for next Saturday, on the 14th of December. We are actively preparing for that, ready, receiving registrations every minute. So it looks like we're getting a lot of registrations this year, and it seems to be building out more and more each year. Letters have gone out to the residents on Maury Avenue, as they do every year, explaining that that's where the lineup will occur. The police chief, myself, and members of Public Works today had a meeting, so that we are all on the same page on road closures and parking and all of that. So I feel really good about it. The award ceremony will be held at Roma's again this year, and we're just looking forward to a really great parade again this year. I'd like to thank Deborah Howard and Otis Wright for generously volunteering their time to serve at the judge's table this year alongside of Mike Mans, who, as you all know, is a longtime business owner here in town. I also want to point out the donation of property from Atlantic Union Bank to the town of Bowling Green for, to serve as an economic development office. So I'll finally have a permanent home here in Bowling Green, and I'm very grateful for that. You all will be asked to consider a resolution tonight and formally accept that donation. And assuming that you do so, we are planning a ribbon-cutting ceremony. In your packet, it says that it's tentatively scheduled, which it was at the time that the staff report was submitted, but it is firm, and you all should have gotten an email invitation. But the ribbon-cutting ceremony is scheduled for Tuesday, December 10th, at 3:00 p.m. at 109 Courthouse Lane. Of course, you're encouraged to attend. Mayor Satellite will be there to speak a few, say a few words. Also, some members of Atlantic Union Bank will be there as well to say a few things. We'll also be providing some light refreshments and just an opportunity to shake hands and to thank the bank for the donation to the town of Bowling Green. Also want to thank council member Jean Davis for generously offering to do one of her beautiful centerpieces for that day. So thank you very much, Jean. Moving on to the after-action of Portwood Harvest Festival, I'm sure you all have had an opportunity to look over things, and I won't go into too much detail. We did see a small increase in vendors this year. It wasn't a large increase, but it was an increase, and that's always good. It was a beautiful day in Bowling Green. I feel a little silly talking about Harvest Festival. It's hard to believe that it's already December. But it was a great event, and incident-free, and a good time was had by all. and to thank the bank for the donation to the town of Bowling Green. Um, also want to thank, uh, Councilmember Jean Davis for generously offering to do one of her beautiful centerpieces for that day. Um, so thank you very much, Jean. Um, moving on to, uh, the after-action of Fort Worth Harvest Festival. I'm sure you all have had an opportunity to look over things, um, and I won't go into too much detail. Um, we did see a small increase in vendors this year. Uh, it wasn't a large increase, but it was an increase, and that's always good. It was a beautiful day in Bowling Green. I feel a little silly talking about Harvest Festival. Uh, it's hard to believe that it's already December. Uh, but it was a great event and, um, and, and incident-free, um, and a good time was had by all. We had, we had a lot of, uh, really great positive feedback from it. Um, some of the important things, um, are our sponsorships, uh, which totaled sixty-five-hundred dollars this year, which is great. Um, we saw Kelvick, McKesson, and, um, Sydner Hydro come through with, um, title sponsorships at fifteen hundred dollars each, and that was really encouraging, really great. Um, lastly, uh, you know, there, if you go through the report, it goes through everything from, um, event prep to event day, um, the entertainment, the motorcycle show, the car show, the beer garden, things of that nature. On the very last page of the after-action report, you'll notice expenditures and revenues at the very bottom. Um, the Harvest Festival budget is twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars. Our expenditures came in under budget at twenty-one thousand seven hundred ninety-six dollars and thirty-one cents, which was, um, seventeen hundred and three dollars and sixty-nine cents under budget. Uh, we saw revenues of twenty-four thousand three hundred thirty dollars and seventy-six cents, and we saw a net revenue of two thousand five hundred thirty-four dollars and forty-five cents. That, uh, number, um, may increase, uh, a bit as meals tax continues to come in. Um, folks that have not, or food vendors that have not, uh, remitted their meals tax are delinquent at this point. Uh, their meals tax was due on, um, I believe it was November twentieth. Um, so we're reaching out to those, uh, vendors that have yet to submit their meals tax, and, um, our policy in the past is if, if they don't pay, they, they don't get invited back. So, that's how it goes. But overall, this was a very successful event. Anytime that we're covering event costs and, um, and certainly when we're seeing a net revenue, um, that is, is, uh, in my mind, very successful. Um, it was, it was a great day, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Well, it's nice to see, uh, net revenue, uh, from that. I mean, it's not supposed to be a big moneymaker, but it is good to cover costs and have a little bit extra in there. I appreciate your hard work in getting the numbers down on that.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I know it was a lot of effort and, uh, sorry I couldn't be there. I had Operation Day before, but, uh, I understand it was an excellent event, and, uh, everybody enjoyed themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Any comments or questions, the council?
I just have a quick question on the, in the packet on the Community Heart and Soul. What's the status of that? How's that moving along?
Community Heart and Soul is, um, is steady rolling, and we actually just had, uh, another phase one training meeting, um, earlier this week. It was Tuesday. Um, we're seeing a lot of interest in, in the town and in the community. Um, I think we had probably twenty-some people, uh, there at the last meeting, which is, is fantastic. These folks are taking their time, you know, their personal time to come to the town hall and, and showing a, a genuine interest in seeing the town thrive. Um, as you all know, um, it is designed to be, to not be an overnight process, so it is, it is, uh, drawn out a little bit over, over two years. So, we are still in phase one training, and we're actively developing, um, our core group, which is, um, kind of the decision-making group. Um, obviously, those decisions are, are being made with all voices heard. Um, Community Heart and Soul is very, um, in the spirit of inclusiveness, so, um, which is, which is wonderful. But, uh, it's going great, um, and, and I think that, uh, folks are very optimistic, and as we kind of get our feet planted and, um, start to get our rules in order and how we, uh, want to manage the group in, in terms of, um, processes, I think that, uh, sooner than later, we will start seeing some, some good results from it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, part of that, but Melissa was saying, the twenty or so people that came were there at the last meeting and was there at the first gathering. So, they're just not people filtering in that just want to see what's going on. They're people that actually want to help, that want to see, you know, things go on, so they're coming back, and this is what they're willing to do. So, thank you, Melissa.
Well, I, I can attest to this, that this process was one that was used at a local church here. Uh, it was called a map moving ahead with purpose. Took two years to do that, and the outgrowth of that was, uh, fourteen thousand square-foot expansion of the facility at the church, um, new services, the largest and, uh, most successful, uh, early service in, in the county, and, uh, a lot of other positive things, websites, Facebooks, uh, Facebook posts. We now have, uh, streaming live, our services on, on the web. So, some very positive things can come out of this, and it takes a lot, a while to do that. It just doesn't happen overnight. It's an opportunity to grow and understand where things are, so thank you for doing that. We, uh, we look for much success out of that.
Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you.
All right. Unfinished business. I must say, I'm sorry, we've got treasure report. Sorry about that, Melissa.
I don't have anything, I mean, does anyone have any questions on what's here? It's a much more brief, uh, than usual, but I kind of tried to highlight, instead of giving you our daily activities, kind of highlights a little bit here. If there's no questions, there's just two things I'd kind of want to add. Um, I'm sorry that Billy left before I was able to say this, but the USDA sewer project is done. I don't know if anyone's noticed, but we don't have anybody in town anymore, so that's pretty exciting. Um, I'm finishing up the last payment with USDA in this, uh, I guess, early next week, and then we'll see how everything shakes out, and, um, we'll be done. So...
So, do we look like it came in on budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Absolutely. We did not go over at all. There's some contingency left over.
Okay.
Unfortunately, uh, we have to give that back.
That's too bad. Somebody need the driveway pad? Um, very good. Thank you.
The other point I wanted to make that Billy had touched on, was I am working with Andy Crocker from Circap to help find grant opportunities for the sewer line on, um, courthouse by the nine one, that's back at the nine one one call center in, in Davis Court. We're hoping to be able to combine those two and, and get some kind of grant funding for that.
Didn't we just do a significant amount of work on Davis Court not long ago?
We did water. We, we saw the water lines, and now the sewer.
Okay. Gotcha. All right. Thank you. Any questions on, Melissa?
Question on, uh, the, um, register. Johnson Exterminating, does he come like every week or every, he's in here like three times? I was just kind of curious as to, yeah, how much exterminating?
He, um, that company also does all of our cleaning and events setup and breakdown.
Got it.
Yeah. So, they're here every week. Thank you.
Not necessarily to exterminate, right? Okay. Good question. Thank you. All right. Any other, uh, any other items in staff force presentations? Or none, let's go to unfinished business. Um, I'm not sure what the training course of small water system is. Who wants to address that?
We need to pick a date. There was someone who spoke at the last meeting about the need for this because of our new project and the requirements. It's not something that has to be done tonight.
Okay. All right.
But didn't they, but didn't they also, maybe I read it wrong, but didn't they also say that, didn't even write a need course? Did I see that in an email somewhere? Or what?
If I, I think I... Addressed it. There is, um, I think a certain percent of us are required if we're gonna report. But the water, which you've already accepted, kind of do, that we have to go through this training so that we understand, um, all the checks and, you know, all the, you know, how it's calculated and all that. So, that's what that's about. Um, yeah, and then we have plenty of time to do that, but it is something that we should at least, you know, we want to come up with a date and we can...
So, why don't we put that on the agenda for January?
I just, I saw, I saw an email that said something, and I was confused, so, okay. So, maybe I saw something different.
I can actually interrupt. The letters of condition say that council is required to have the technical knowledge and that the class is recommended. So, that's where, um, at last meeting, I was asked to clarify that, and that's not an email to follow up to say that class is a recommendation, but the requirement is to have the technical knowledge. So, I, I don't know how they are going to measure that requirement, but that's what, how it reads in the letters of condition.
So, I'd say let's move this over to the January council meeting, get over the holidays and decide what we're gonna do. How many council members are gonna be there? What they're doing, what their training may be? You gonna agree with that? All right. Consent agenda. Any items that anybody needs to pull up, change, discuss?
Number, number nine, we brought up at the last meeting, that's, uh, that's at, uh, special use type. I mean, I'd, uh, almost like the mix zoning ordinance that we had talked about, wasn't it? Was this a...
I think it's just the authority to advertise it.
Just advertise for that, right?
Mm-hmm. Just advertise, not approve it.
Right. Okay.
Do I hear a motion to accept the consent, consent agenda stance?
Uh, I'm making a motion over here, accept it as it is.
All right. Do a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Raise your hand. Okay. Okay. Unanimous. Thank you very much. All right. Let's move on to ten new business. The resolution, um, let's discuss that resolution. This is the resolution, uh, Union Bank has generously offered to give the town the former visitor center, Courthouse Lane. Uh, a title search is being conducted, a title search, and, and is an underwriting. Once completed, the town will receive the deed at the courthouse. Have we received that deed yet, do you know? Has that been done?
There is a draft deed that has been prepared.
Okay.
Um, but state law requires that with any, um, transfer of property to the town, that the town has to formally accept it by resolution. So, that's what this is.
Right. So, the building will come there, become the events and, uh, economic development coordinator's office. So, she'll have a permanent office over there for the events and economic development coordination, which is a, quite a, quite a generous gift, actually. Uh, it's a nice piece of property. Uh, they've done some work to it recently. It has a new heating and air conditioning system in it, so we won't be putting a lot of money into the facility, so, uh, we will need to invest something in it, I'm sure, at some point in time, but, uh, at this point in time, it looks like a really good opportunity to move forward. So, let's take, you want to read the resolution?
Okay.
That'd be great.
This is what happened when we take the book away. Whereas Atlantic Union Bank has generously offered to give the town of Bowling Green the property, including all the structures located at one oh nine Courthouse Lane, tax map number four three A two A sixteen. And whereas Virginia Code section fifteen point two dash eighteen oh three requires that Bowling Green Town Council approve a resolution accepting an interest in land, now therefore be resolved by the Bowling Green Town Council at its regularly scheduled meeting on December fifth, two thousand and nineteen, that in accordance with Virginia Code section fifteen point two eighteen oh three, the Bowling Green Town Council accepts the gift of land from Atlantic Union Bank, which is located at one oh nine Courthouse Lane, tax map number forty three A two A sixteen, and be it further resolved that the town managers authorized to execute any and all documents necessary for or related to the conveyance, subject to review and approval of the town attorney, and be it finally resolved by the Bowling Green Town Council, that this resolution shall be recorded in the land records of the Caroline County Circuit Court. And this resolution will be recorded right behind the deed.
Gotcha. Uh, do I have a motion to accept the resolution?
A second.
Ms. Davis, do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Got it. Appreciate that. So, we have a motion to approve and, uh, second it. Uh, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed? Thank you very much unanimously. Unanimously accepted. Very good. Thank you.
Cece, Joe also, Cece, is Joe also still here? No, she's not. All right. Well, Cece, uh, one of the, uh, our auxiliaries, you go check with AP Hill, see if they have any, uh, furniture and desks for her over there, because we don't have any. We've been looking around, trying to find some. So, if anybody knows where we might go, get a desk and some chairs for it, uh, please feel free to let us know. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we'll have a discussion in regards to the consideration for the EDA appointment. And I'll read a little background. John C., EDA term has ended. He was the chairman of the EDA, by the way, and he is no longer interested in serving on the EDA. There are no attachments, considerations, uh, candidates and appointments, and we don't have any in the packet at this point in time. Any discussion? All right. We'll move that on for informational items. Um, one item I'm gonna put in here on, on new, I, I would like to ask Mr. Parker if he would like to come up and since he was kind of a little bit late for the, uh, public session, uh, discuss a request, uh, for Bowling Green Meadows.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor. Council members, thank you very much for, for your time allowing me to speak with you. I know I was late. I apologize. I come down from DC, so it's always sketchy. Uh, my name is George Parker. Um, I know a couple of you, but not everybody. I have lived in Bowling Green Meadows for almost four years now, and I am currently the, uh, HOA president over there at Bowling Green Meadows. Uh, one of the issues that we have in the neighborhood, which I understand has been an issue probably since inception, but especially now that the community is, is fairly well-grown and, and fully populated, and especially at Halloween time, is we have no streetlights, and the streets are very, very dark, and my wife and I sit out on the front porch and we see kids up and down the street, and it's just, um, it, it's always kind of nerve-wracking with, with the streets as dark as they get at that time of year. Um, earlier this year, uh, our, our board has begun the process of investigating the potential of installing streetlights throughout the neighborhood or semi-throughout. Um, we have a few locations that seem to be ideal. Um, we do have a, um, lighting designer who will be coming in on December eighteenth, I recall, yes, um, who will go through the neighborhood and give us some ideas of, of what may be possible and what some of our options may be. Since, uh, Bowling Green Meadows is part of the town and we are not private roads, we are requesting, uh, if there's any potential financial assistance from the town to help us get, uh, some streetlights into the neighborhood. Uh, we don't really have any, uh, any sense yet of what the cost will be, but we wanted to make an initial request for consideration, and as we get the lighting designer report back and we see a little bit of what our options are, then we can kind of move on from there and see what may or may not be possible. Uh, any questions for me?
Give you a little history on that. When the, the subdivision was developed, it was supposed to have, um, sidewalks and streetlights. Uh, that was part of the, um, the development process. Somewhere, uh, before it got done, uh, they were somehow admitted out of that. And at some point in time, uh, probably about ten years ago, the subdivision is now about seventeen years old. About ten years ago, the, uh, the town had considered, um, helping with some funding, uh, not paying it all, but helping with some funding on that, and that kind of got, um, pushed to the side, not from the town, but from the community, because there was some discussion on that. Um, it is a major safety issue. I've had a lady fall in my driveway, um, at Halloween with her grandkids, and she face-planted on the asphalt. Um, so there is a lot of safety issues in there, especially around that. We have a lot of walking traffic. Uh, you know, people jog, walk, bring their dogs through there, uh, babies in strollers and those kind of things, so, um, you know, separate away from that, you know, I think we should, could at least have a discussion, maybe help look for some grants, some opportunities, because most of the rest of the town is lit up, and, um, you know, I think the community is not asking for us to pay for it all, um, but to help out from a safety perspective on that. Just not...
So, are all those, excuse me, are all those streets in the BDOT system?
Yes.
They're all in by BDOT?
Yes.
So, I tell you, BDOT, don't have any plans to do anything about it, right?
Not that I know of. Not that I've heard of.
And that would be directed through the town? Would it be through the community?
Uh, I mean, this is, uh, this is probably something that, once we get the, uh, Bowling I mean, this is, this is probably something that, once we get the Bowling Green, Virginia Community Alliance Group up and running, you know, which we're up now, but we're waiting on our five-one-one C-three status, we're in the process of that, that might be something that we might be able to help with some grant issues, down for that, you know, something for us to kind of help, because that's what we're about. So, I mean, you know, maybe sometime next year, we get our status, we can, you know, start seeing what we can do. All right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Parker, I take the combination of reaching out to BDOT, maybe with the town and help and the Bowling Green community there, so, thank you so much for bringing that forward, appreciate that.
Thank you very much for your time.
Any other new business that's not on the agenda, does anybody would like to bring to the table? No care hearing none, we'll go to the council reports. Ms. Folt? All right?
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Okay, so the planning commission, Chairman Boyd, he is moving forward on gathering individuals for advisory committee. He does have a couple of people that have confirmed they would like to attend, one of them was sat on planning commission meeting last month, I'll actually deliver. We do have our newest and last person on the planning commission, so we now have the full commission established. We are also on twelve sixteen, we'll have a public hearing for the special use permit for residents.
Could you repeat that, Valerie?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Question.
Sorry. On December the sixteenth, there'll be a public hearing in regards to the special use permit for a resident who is looking for a mixed use on her property. We've also moved forward on the advisory committee. Jeff is almost, or Chairman Boyd is almost done with collecting individuals, finding people who are involved. We had one of those people come to our earliest planning commission meeting. It's just kind of a tenuous with some people, but I'm sure by the end of the, or our next meeting, we'll have something pretty finalized. So we're moving along really well with that.
What time is it meeting on twelve sixteen?
It's at six-thirty.
Thank you.
Six o'clock, sorry, six o'clock.
Thank you.
Ms. Gaines?
We did not meet, sorry, you'll have to.
Okay, Ms. Wright. All right, Ms. Davis, EDA?
Close session.
Okay. Also, the EDA continues to work on, with developers on the three oh one corridor facilities. We're trying to reach out and develop that property. It's an ongoing process. All right?
I just want to reiterate that our project was done, and I'll be put in his file.
Thank goodness, all right. All right, any other information that council needs to put on the table tonight? Oh, I'm sorry, the last one, the Christmas party. The Board of Supervisors had the annual employment holiday luncheon scheduled for Wednesday the eleventh, twelve noon to two P.M. in the town hall here. The lunch is served at noon, and second shift will be at one o'clock. So employees can come, cover, you can cover the offices. If you'd like to go, please let them know. They've invited the council and employees of town to go. So it's a very nice event, they do a really good job here, so please let them know approximately how many folks are going to come, if you're going to come to bring some out. Can you talk to Joan Parker?
If I can add that I went ahead and RSC'd a couple extra, just in case you guys weren't going to come, I hadn't heard, but I went ahead and threw in a couple extra RSC'd, so feel free to come.
Okay, that's Wednesday the eleventh. All right.
I do have one thing here, Vice Mayor. You said we have money left over from the sewer plant, I mean, the sewer deal. Is there any way that we can somehow enable the USDA to pave that lot, that would use as their storage? You know, with that money, is there any way we can try to work it in, because they, you know, just?
For the lot?
You know, it's something that we may all have to do, if we can try to use that money to save, you know, that was their storage area, that was their area where they messed up with all their heavy equipment, all this and that, maybe we can, sweet talk them.
The only way we can get more money than was already contracted was through a change order, and that would have to come through the engineer, and then... They won't issue any of that additional money without a change order.
Yeah, federal restrictions, they have on issue, type of thing. Good thought.
We're trying to.
Good thought. Any other comments? All right.
Motion to adjourn?
All right, motion to adjourn?
A second.
All right, second, all in favor, raise your hand. We're out, thank you all very much.